Just a heads up, everybody, we are now recording.
Thank you.
Thanks, please.
I did get your comment, thank you.
Thank you.
meeting. Would you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Huggins, absent. Commissioner Devoine.
Here, present.
Present. Commissioner Freiberger.
Present.
Commissioner Fatisi.
Present.
Commissioner Maddox has called in or emailed and won't be in. Commissioner Fernet, here. And Commissioner Saxon, absent. The consent agenda, did everyone have a chance to read the minutes? And are there any comments? Yes?
On the letter from Catherine Olsen, I cannot figure out who she wants, who family property wants to buy the property from, from Bethlehem. This owner from the message church, it says that she wants to buy the property. I can't figure out who she's trying to buy the property from.
That's a good question.
That's easy to find out, by the way.
Yeah.
What's the address on the Lutheran church? Do we know?
I don't know that off the top of my head.
Is it on Wicker?
It is on Wicker, yes.
How do you do that?
I just have this to it with my real estate website, so I can tell property managers. It's kind of like doing the county-related site. If you know the parcel number, it'll show you the adjacent parcels and who the owner is. And if it's an LLC or a corporation, it just points us in another direction, which is right.
I should know that because I go to that church. But there's several properties down there, there's Pelham Park, there's Bethlehem, there's the message church. I'm afraid who she, who family property trying to buy that property from.
Okay.
Both properties here.
If the commission would like, I can look into that and verify what the address is and update that section there to clarify that.
Okay, so we want to add to the minutes the address of the church that, what's her name?
Catherine Olsen.
Yeah, that she wants to purchase for a tiny home community. Look up the address and put it in here. For the record, Commissioner Huggins is present.
So I just noticed something, and because I just noticed it, I did not have time to look and see. It looks like we had six commissioners in attendance at that meeting, but it looks like the motion to table the tree standards says five to zero. Had someone left early on that one? Or was that just a typo?
Good catch.
You can change that six to zero. Otherwise, they looked fine to me.
So we're going to add the address to the church and we're going to change the vote count. Anything else? Commissioner Huggins, anything on the minutes you want to bring up?
No.
Commissioner Fatisi?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, with those changes suggested to the minutes, can we have someone make a motion to accept them with those changes?
I so move.
I second.
Commissioner Freiberger firsts, Commissioner Fatisi seconds. All in favor of those changes, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay, that's good. General public comments. Do you want me to read the spiel before I see if anyone's commenting?
Read the spiel.
Okay, please keep comments to three minutes or less, because state law prohibits the use of city facilities for the purpose of supporting or opposing a campaign or ballot proposition. We respectfully request that public comment not make reference to such matters. Written comments will be accepted by letter or via email at NMC, or, sorry, at mcgowan@cedrowooly.gov. Attention, public comment. Do we have any public comments?
Not.
And do we have anyone hovering for comment?
We do not have anybody attending remotely.
Okay. Well, with that, at 6:37, we will, I guess we open it at 6:36 and we're closed at 6:37 for general public comment. I guess moving along to unfinished business. Back to the tree standards. Proposed amendments to Chapter 12.40 and 17.50 Cedar Woolley Municipal Code to update tree standards.
Okay, so we've seen this one a couple of times now. At the last planning commission meeting, the planning commission did point out a number of areas where there was kind of discrepancies, where things didn't quite match up between different sections of our code. So Ashton here did take the liberty of fixing those areas. You'll see that he also has added in some really nice, easy-to-use tables for people to choose based on kind of what they're planning on planting, as far as if it's just landscaping trees or street trees in general. If you want to kind of talk through the changes you made, you're welcome to do that.
Sure, I can talk through the changes. So, looking at the beginning, at the definition section, I'm sorry, at the purpose section, I just corrected parking strips to planting strips for consistency. And looking at, I defined planting strip in the definitions to mean the same thing as the parking strip. And I just clarified that because there could be some confusion, as parking strip might be confused for where somebody could pull off the road to park. And then taking a look at the permission to plant trees, this is where the discrepancies began, between the dimensions of where street trees could be planted. So I corrected all of the discrepancies that were in this section, and I added a table at the very end to help the reader sort of figure out which trees, which dimensions belong in which tree size. Moving on to 12.40.060, trimming overhanging trees, we added that it shall be the responsibility of the adjacent property owner of the sidewalk to regularly trim trees off the sidewalk to provide a vertical clearance of eight feet, so as not to constitute a hazard or impotent to the progress or vision of anyone traveling on public property. This was something that we talked to with the Public Works Director about and came up with this language for that. If you move on to 12.40.070, we took out no street tree shall be planted closer than 20 feet from any hydrant, and we moved that to 12.40.030, which is a previous section, permission to plant trees, so that all of the wording that had to do with whether a tree could be planted or could not be planted was in one section. All right, and then moving on to 12.40.090, this is also where we had some discrepancies. We, I corrected the planting from, I corrected parking strips to say planting strips, and we added the on average instead of at a minimum, depending on the size of the tree, to make it clear for the spacing of where trees should be in the public right-of-way. And then moving on to prohibited trees, we added the wording, "Street trees must not become a nuisance or be a disruption to city infrastructure or public safety and general welfare," just to sort of cover ourselves in another section so that our right-of-ways are not blocked by any, any trees or vegetation. And then the recommended trees is where the bulk of the changes are. Essentially, I struck out the previous list that we had, and I maintained some of the trees that did match the categories, the dimensional categories of each of these lists. And then I also added some new trees based off of a couple of different resources. I looked at the U.S. Forestry Service, as well as the Seattle Department of Transportation and the Bellingham list of street trees. And I compared and cross-referenced between those three sources to come up with these lists. I also moved some of the trees that were previously in another section to a different dimension that better suited the size of that tree. And then at the end of this section, I also added another table, just because this is a pretty lengthy list, so that people reading the code, developers or property owners, can easily find out which trees belong in a small, narrow-sized planting strip, medium, large, which ones might be recommended below utility lines, and which ones are prohibited outright. And then we added a new section, 12.40.120, planting standards. This is basic, this is saying that street trees need to be planted in accordance with our landscaping chapter, which is also being amended, as well as where street trees are planted between the walking route and the sidewalk and back of curb, and/or within five feet of an underground utility line, root barriers, as required for the Public Works Department's standard, shall be installed to protect our sidewalk infrastructure. The rest of the edits in Chapter 12.40 are just fixing the section numbers so they match. Any questions on that section before I go down to landscaping?
You know, it's not a question. I'm back on 12.40.080. Let's talk about this a little bit more, maybe, and we can do it later. It's the existing trees that are the problem. Okay, we got, you would have to tear up probably half of Talcott when I look at the trees that have popped up all the sidewalks, and I notice we're doing a lot of sidewalk work, citywide, especially on state right now, which is going to be great. It's going to integrate a whole lot of walkability going straight up on state. So Matt, you're on a bike all the time, right? So to get on the sidewalk, right, there's certain streets that there's no way you could even get on. You'd be, you know.
Right.
Yeah. So do we want to take a look at that and add a little bit more teeth to it, or a little bit more definitions to it of exactly what is considered, you know, a problem in general? I mean, overhanging, I get, that's easy, but the other stuff isn't easy at all. I don't know, thoughts on that?
I'm still new, I'm still learning here, but do you?
Turn your mic on.
Oh, thank you.
Hi, I'm still new and learning here, but Nicole, do you know if the city has a street maintenance program, that they work with property owners on removing hazardous trees and repairing sidewalks that have folded upward and dripping hazards and so forth? Or if...
I think it's more of an in-good-faith thing. People have often contacted Nathan Salzina, and they've worked with him if, you know, they're needing equipment or something like that to get the job done. You know, public safety is really what comes first, so he's willing to come out and help. But really, it is understood that it is the property owner's responsibility to maintain at least the trees in the adjacent right-of-way to their property. Same thing with the sidewalks. We do have kind of a sidewalk repair program, so the city does provide, I'm trying to remember what the, what materials they provide. They don't provide the concrete, but they do, they do help out. I, I'm sorry, I don't recall off the top of my head, but we do have a sidewalk repair program.
Is it, is it something, I'm just guessing, is it something like that you can borrow forms or something from them to form up and then do it, or like that?
Something like that, yeah, yeah.
That'd be a good program to have, because...
I'm just saying that this, this section here is lacking beef, for lack of a better description. I mean, the city may remove or cause to be removed at the expense of the abutting landowner or a tree which is unsafe. It's so open as to what someone would determine is unsafe and a nuisance versus somebody else, right? So I would think it would behoove us to maybe put a little bit more time in that to determine exactly what that is. I mean, there's the obvious stuff, right? So you have a sidewalk that on one edge, it's up by four-plus inches. Well, it gets dark here, you know, come November on, and you couldn't even see that. And a lot of street lighting on some of these streets are pretty much nonexistent because of the street canopy. And I'm sure this has come up more than once of somebody knocking on the door on the counter saying, "Oh, that tree tripped my whatever," and this, that, and the other thing. So just from the city's own perspective, from our perspective, shouldn't we have some additional definition in there of exactly what that is, so it is identified? And again, it's loose here as well. Well, you know, it's, the city may but is not required to contribute to the cost of removal and replanning. It's kind of like, okay, if I'm in a good mood one day, I'll do it, and if I'm not the other day, you know, I'm not going to do it. I'm not saying we need to do this now, but as time goes on, and you do see a lot more damage, especially in some of the older areas, due to the trees that are already there, you know, you're going to have a problem at some point if we already have it.
I think you bring up a good point, Commissioner. Would it be helpful to add some language in there along the lines of, it's Public Works that would be responsible for overseeing a program or working with the property owners? I'm wondering if we could add some language in there, that would say, that would recognize that in some way, in conjunction with Public Works Department, property owners would work to resolve a matter, kind of. I don't have the words here, but I'm wondering if we can get at that and recognize Commissioner's question there.
Now, that'd be a question, I mean, Mark's not here, he retired, but there's got to be a folder or file someplace that somebody's walking in and identified very specific attributes.
Right, thinking diseased tree, or limbs that are x-length, whatever, or hanging down, whatever. But, yeah, I think, I think we could probably work some more teeth into this, but there is the, the kind of, I think to, to a point, it is open-ended for a reason, because there are so many ways someone could say, "I think that this tree is a nuisance because," blank. So it can be hard to kind of cover all of the different situations when you put in a strict definition. That can actually make it harder for the city to regulate things when someone has, in fact, you know, "I have this, this reason that this tree is a nuisance," and say it is a good reason, but when you put a specific definition in, suddenly you're like, okay, technically, according to this regulation, this doesn't fall within the category of a nuisance tree, so.
Like they do with, we could do like they do with, like in, in a lot of our codes, we say at the planner's discretion. We could say at the, at the city shops, sorry, can't come up with the word, you know what I'm saying? If they, if they say it's bad, it's got to go, or...
Right, so I want to, yeah, exactly. I want to make sure we still have that language in there so that we do have the discretion to make that.
That's it.
I'm thinking more like an attorney, okay? I'm thinking more of an attorney that deals in negligence and just people that get hurt for whatever the situation is, right? And that's where I'm going with this. So let's say your grandmother is walking down the sidewalk, and you knew the Joneses had that tree, that, you know, the sidewalk's up six inches, well, she takes a hit or breaks her neck, and now she's paralyzed. But we knew about that, and they knew about that, so who do you point the finger at? All I'm saying, this is really vague here, and I'm not saying go over the top like we are, you know, a legal entity, but there's definitely, there needs to be language. I'm sure there is in other jurisdictions that identify something that, that could be significant.
In Seattle, which has the same rule that, that the homeowner is responsible for the sidewalk.
Right.
It's, it's the homeowners. They, they, the city doesn't take responsibility, the homeowner is responsible for not fixing the trip hazard. So I don't know how theirs is done, but...
Can I play the devil's advocate?
Go ahead.
So let's say you're, the Joneses on Talcott, and you've got a 200-year-old tree out there that everybody loves, and you go out there with a chainsaw and knock it down because you don't want grandma to get hurt. Is that unfavorable?
That's not where I'm going with that. No, 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 I'm not going there at all with that. All I'm saying is, if you have a situation that is obvious and apparent that there is not only something wrong with the sidewalk, is there a, do we have something, or we should have something, that says, hey, a letter then goes to the Joneses or whoever pointing out in Section 12.40 dot whatever, okay, please review this, it's, it's a hazard. There are things people can do about certain things. I'm talking about the obvious stuff, that the fact that we even thought about it, okay, and there is a process to identify it, to whoever is responsible for doing the repair. I'm just throwing it out there, I'm not saying do anything tonight, but this is just kind of like, well, it's a kind of maybe, we feel like helping you out, we'll help you out. This is about as vague as it gets.
I'm scrambling here to see, to get to the city code. I bet there's something in the Public Works part of the code that addresses this. And I'm happy to follow up with Bill to find that.
There is. I believe it was relatively recently, unfortunately, I was just talking with a staff member about it, and so I believe that we recently had to put some teeth behind the sidewalk maintaining, and I think that came out to a certain, I don't know how we're doing with enforcing it, but, because there is, there is always a question, and this gets into legal stuff, which we're not as a body, you know, that's not our purview, but, you know, it is the responsibility of the property owner, but if the city knows about it, there's always, you know, people want to go after the city and sue them, and so I believe we, we did update something, and that definitely is something to talk to Bill about, because I'm sure he would know what that is. And I feel like that was relatively recently where we kind of put, not that we didn't have something in there, because obviously it's pretty clear that it's the property owner's responsibility, but a little bit more about like sending letters, maybe, and telling them, "You need to fix these sidewalks that are problematic." Also, just a couple of things to kind of throw out there, I was thinking about the fact that in the case of hazard trees, this is a little bit different situation, where people are concerned that they're going to fall onto somebody's house or something like that. A lot of times, an arborist report is something that is requested, but just thinking about options here, I think that would be something that wouldn't really fit into this category when we're talking about trying to determine what constitutes a tree that is problematic. So just thinking about the fact that you can kind of almost over, possibly overdefine it, and I think leaving ourselves an out, because, you know, an arborist could potentially look at it and say, well, yeah, it's, it's jacking up the sidewalk, but it's a healthy tree, that's why it's doing it, it's getting big, and they shouldn't have planted that type of tree there. And then, then you get into the whole thing of, everybody in the neighborhood loves it, but it's a trip hazard. So there is, you know, always going to be that, that struggle between...
Yeah, Shoreline has some code, and I'll give you an example, because that actually happened to a friend of mine. Tree got hit by lightning, beautiful tree, an old Doug fir, blew off the whole top. Not too sure if the tree is dead. Well, neighbors wanted down, because when that thing comes down, it's 150 feet high. Property lines are 10-foot setbacks. So now it's like, okay, well, the arborist needs to come on out to make sure that it's still kind of hanging in there. So, yeah, there, the trees do not take any prisoners. When they come down, they will take everything with it.
Okay.
So...
Yeah, so I'm happy to work with Ashton, we'll take a look at other jurisdictions' codes as far as how they go about defining their nuisance and hazard trees.
Sure.
Make sure to still leave city discretion to make those decisions, maybe put something in. If requested, an arborist report may be necessary to make that final determination, but...
And we can check also with Bill if they've got written policy outside of code about how they handle it and how they do that, make that decision.
I don't know what the code was, and I think it was probably right before I got on, but probably in the, like, late 90s, when they fixed up Ferry Street, they had that exact situation come up where they wanted all of the big trees, they wanted to take out all the big trees. Basically, Ferry Street used to be like the ones on the corner of Puget and Ferry, those big tall ones there that are tearing up the sidewalk. Every, it was like that every block, all the way to Township Street, so it was very uniform, very nice-looking, but sidewalks were all tore up, so they were going to take them all out, and there was huge uproar from the community and the people on the street that they wanted to keep the, those big trees. And then, so anyway, they, they made it like optional, is what they did, they, because they, I don't know what rule was in effect, but basically that has happened in Cedar Woolley, that, that the city wanted to remove trees for safety and to fix the sidewalks. What they ended up doing was, basically, those big maples are so stable that they, they just cut, they just cut a chunk out of the side of it and then re-poured the sidewalk, and now they're starting to raise again, but it's been 15, 20 years since the last time they had to do that, so...
And that's what they're doing with the sidewalk replacement, they're doing selective panels along, is it along Ferry? I can't, yeah, and, and I was asking, because looking at those giant trees, they're just going to cause the same problems, so are we removing them? And it's, nope, we're going to cut the roots on that side, and that should give them another 20 years or so, maybe.
So there's reasonable solutions, right, that are not economically a major hardship?
Yeah. Okay. So with, with that change, I know we still have another chapter to go through here, but are we comfortable still moving with, forward with a public hearing at the next meeting, just given that we reviewed that, of course, before approving anything? Following the hearing?
All right. We all seem to be in agreement.
Yeah, I think, I think it's time, yeah.
All righty. Shall we move on to the landscaping chapter?
All right. The landscaping chapter isn't quite as in-depth in the scope of the changes as the street trees chapter. This one is essentially just me, I corrected all of the discrepancies that I fixed in the previous chapter, so that it reflected in our landscaping chapter as well. So the first changes were at 17.50.070. These are just dimensional changes. We did change in line E, section, or line, in Section E, line number one, deciduous trees, we changed that to a two-inch caliper, because most of the tree nurseries that we get our street trees from... because, uh, most of the tree nurseries that, uh, we get our street trees from provide trees at that caliper. The rest of the corrections in this section is just clarifying, um, yeah, just providing some clarifications. For example, in number three and number four, it says seven foot minimum and twenty-four inch minimum, just clarifying that that is height. Same goes with number five. In number seven, I was just, um, editing the direction, the dimensions again. And lastly, we added, or I added section F stating where trees are to be planted within five feet of a pedestrian walkway and or utility line, root barriers as required. Uh, for the public's work department standard shall be installed. Just adding that to this section as well. I believe that is all of the changes to this section.
Nicely done.
Yeah.
Much better.
Much better.
Mr. Chair, are you okay with me asking Ashton a question?
Yep, yep.
Or are we going down the line?
Now's the time.
Okay. Um, so, uh, I, I saw in the staff report that it mentioned that, um, some discrepancies between what was proposed in these amendments and with public works had been resolved because there were some, some differences. Um, did public works get to vet the new street tree list? Okay. Cause I know it's gone through a couple of iterations now and I know they had originally provided a, maybe a preliminary one, but then I feel like it's, it's changed a bit since then, so.
To clarify what public works called out to us was the clearance between the sidewalk, or no, street uh, face and canopy.
Yeah.
It needed to be eight feet as opposed to six. That was a conflict between what we'd had, had proposed in here was six feet. And they have written in their standards, eight. So they wanted that change. And in the meantime, while we were changing that, we were like, hey, take a look at this list. Let us know if there's any issues that you have with this. So, um, yeah, they looked at it and we're happy with our list, so.
And they didn't actually have an approved trees list already, huh? Just, just the root barrier was the big.
There were some, they, they typically went out of this, this chapter twelve, uh, what we used, um, which wasn't great. So hence the amendments, so. Yeah. Um, okay, so that's all the changes. If, uh, the planning commission would like to give staff direction now. Just, uh, task this with preparing for a public hearing at the next meeting, uh, with the changes requested tonight.
Okay. Do we, Pat, do you, I mean, Commissioner Huggins, do you have anything you'd like to?
Anything I wanna add?
Talk about here on this?
No, I'm, I'm very pleased with, uh, what you guys, uh, what you came up with. It's much better. Your table reads the exact opposite of how I would have set it up, but I see why you did it and I, uh, and I really like it. So, uh, it really makes it easier to, to see at a glance what you need to do for the, for the trees. So that's, that's very good. Yeah. Thank you.
Do you have any, anything more to say?
I did, yes. Um, actually, I, I saw on the table and it made me scratch my head a little bit. What does tree height have to do with underground utilities and proximity? I just saw that there was, I, I was curious about that.
I saw that and didn't register.
And of course, now that I'm looking for the table.
Way.
Uh, yeah, so it's page, uh.
Page. Doesn't have a page.
Five of twenty-four.
Yeah, right. As part of twelve forty thirty.
Yeah. Are you looking at maximum tree height within ten feet of an overhead utility?
Uh, no, within five feet of an underground utility.
Um, well, so for this one, we, at the table, we just outright prohibited the large trees from being
Correct.
Within proximity of this. Um, and then, um, if a developer were to choose a recommended tree, um, beneath a utility line, this would be our recommended, uh, dimensional, dimensions for this, just to ensure that, um, we have the root barrier in place. And we know for sure that it's not going to encroach underneath the root barrier into the sidewalk or anything like that.
I was thinking, well, the taller the tree goes, probably the deeper it goes as well. So, yeah.
Yeah.
So, it's just, um, and then, uh, I wanted to make sure, and I may have brought this up at the last meeting that we talked about this, but the planting strip width, we have existing, what would be considered, I guess, non-conforming planting strips now. So this doesn't preclude, obviously, um, those from, like, you only have so much to work with, with the existing ones. There's still a wave, a path forward for developers? Or would this mean that they would not be able to plant any trees in there at all and it would be shrubs or something else?
Hedge, kind of a shrubs or hedge.
I mean, that would make sense, but.
Yeah. Essentially, if you don't have a minimum landscape strip width as it's currently put in here, um, yeah, we would look at alternatives opposed to.
Okay, so it is kind of retroactive as in if a tree dies in a planter strip, it's only three feet, four, I think there were some four foot wide ones in the older.
Um, okay. For new construction, you know, we'll be strict to this. And then in the event, like you're saying, if, if, or whatever, you know, car hits it, tree's gone, we'll remove it. We won't ask that tree to be replaced.
Okay. Good to know. All right.
So I'm, I'm caught up on, uh, the landscaping to add things into it. Surface water is, is really a kind of a big deal. Okay, we're trying to, uh, capture as much water as we can on the impervious. But there's now different technologies that you can employ that you get kind of the best of both worlds. I've seen some really good projects that use a rain garden concept. So basically, it, it, it's kind of like the same features of a pond, but it's not. It's actually planted. It's landscaped. It's designed to capture surface water. I've seen them kind of instead of a planting strip, you have a rain garden go in the middle where you have a little stream going on through. It's all planted with native vegetation and Bothell is another example, did a really good job of that in their downtown area. So when we're talking about surface water in particular, stormwater ponds, I'm not saying do it tonight. But at some point, let's take a look at other things that could easily be classified as landscaping. And this way people can get potentially the best of both worlds to provide landscaping or that landscape look and still be providing some type of, uh, mitigation for the site as a whole.
I think we already, um, if we haven't, we should, I thought we'd already allowed bioswales and.
Bioswales, exactly.
And, uh, and rain gardens.
Bioswales, that's what I was thinking about, bioswales.
They were in, it was someplace where we were discussing, uh, maybe it's in the policies and, or the, the, um, goals and policies. But it was, um, uh, it was, it was encourage LID, limited, um, shoot.
And the design standards and guidelines.
And it was, uh, bioswales and whatever. But I don't know if they are in the code in the landscape.
Um, yeah, so the, the design standards and guidelines manual actually does reference Ulid. It's a low intensity, uh, development essentially. And so there's, there's a lot of provision for that sort of thing in there. But I'm happy to take a look at this under maybe a future, um, potential amendment where we can kind of, um, upgrade the stormwater ponds a little bit.
You know, here's why I'm bringing it up because I know of other projects in town where you don't have the ability to link to any of the surface water facilities that we have in town, right? So in essence, you might have a five acre or more property that's perfect for residential use. However, it's nowhere near, uh, a major, you know, surface water main that's in the street. So if there's ways to mitigate surface water in general, where let's say you can handle sixty percent of it or more sometimes with onsite features instead of having to pump here, there, under ground retention, uh, what do you call it, holding tanks? Those are really, really expensive solutions and there's a lot of different technologies right now to accommodate the same kind of thing. And you get more bang for your buck because it actually looks nice, you know, it's appealing, uh, just overall. So that, yeah, like when we talk about storm ponds, I mean, that's like old school. You put a fence around it and, you know, you can drive through any community and see how different people have dealt with the surface water issue as a whole. And, uh, it's something that, you know, when, when you really think about it, you can actually use it for a beneficial aesthetic use on top of accomplishing the engineering aspect of it as well.
I, I would love to see that one come back, Joe, because, uh, we, we tried, when we were doing our PRD development, we tried to, um, uh, get it in the PRD code that, um, because developers were always arguing, well, if you're gonna, if you're gonna take more open space, we're gonna make our lots smaller and all of this. And so we were just, we weren't, we're trying to get it so you could write it in that they, that, um, the storm ponds had to, um, fulfill another purpose as well as
Right.
The thing. So it either had to be covered and you have some kind of a court on top of it or a sitting area, or it was the kind where,
Walking around it, yeah.
Or it was the kind where, you know, you have a field in the center and it drains off to the edges, but if there's a storm, it fills up and covers the, the playfield. Like, I think there's one on, uh, on, uh, the north end of, uh, of Murdoch where, uh, Janice have the, the apartment complex. I think they have a big field there that's a play area and then a little ditch around the edge of it. But if there's a storm event, it, it fills up and then after a day or two, it goes back down. Anyway, so it, uh, I'd love to see that come back. If, if we don't have that on the books, we, you know, now we can.
Yeah, and there's some great creative ways of dealing with it too. I mean, it looks good, you know?
Yeah, absolutely.
So are we looking for these updates to be more encouraging these type of things or requiring these sorts of things?
I think you can have it both ways. I think not only would you encourage it, but you have more options out there to, uh, first of all, you don't want the water running off to adjoining properties and, you know, just from a, a site level basis as to why we would have that in, in the first place. Impervious surface is gonna generate runoff, bottom line. So if we have different solutions for people that are, A, more economical, accomplish the exact same thing and allow, you know, the, the bigger lots to not be prohibited by potentially a million dollars in upgrades if they need to start running drainage into our regular system that goes someplace else. I'm just saying, it's, it's, it's worthy of investigation and I've seen it in other communities done very well. That, uh, you got, uh, like I said, you got a really good end result and you accomplished, uh, handling, uh, you know, a problematic, uh, issue with water. So.
I may be off base here, but it seems to me that that was kind of the intention that was, uh, that, uh, was going into the, uh, proposed cottage, uh, communities. I was seeing some of that in there. So if we don't already have that in the PRD, then, yeah, that would be a good thing to, to look at. But again, I, I agree with Commissioner Fatizzi that options, more options and encouraging or, or maybe even doing, I, I feel like in the draft cottage language, maybe we had, they could use like open space or, you know, if they, they improve those amenities, they, they have to meet the certain criteria in order. It can't just be unusable in order to, to qualify. So it kind of, it encourages the developer to, um, to go that route if.
Yeah, and their industry accepted, uh, you know, guidelines on doing things like that. This isn't any, we're not reinventing the wheel here. Stuff exists that's very, very specific as to how these, uh, different, uh, whether it's a bioswale or a rain garden, the bioswales are a little bit more on top where rain gardens are below. Back in the day, we called them French strange. You dig a hole, you throw a couple fifty-five gallon runs in there, film it rocks, you got a rain garden. But they're a lot more advanced these days.
I think, I think we talked about them down, like in the, in the, in the Seidro area where there were places where there are no sidewalks and streets with, um, with basically, we're just ditches.
Right, right, right.
There are old ditches that are filled in, you know? And we're saying, you know, instead of requiring them to curb, have, you know, the city going back and trying to curb all of that, that why can't they just be made to be, um, at the most, uh, a rolled curb and then a, um,
Bioswale.
And then a bioswale.
Yep.
Let, let them be, uh, done. Cause it's half dug already, so.
Plus it looks nice and it accommodates what the issue is to begin with.
Yeah.
Isn't that already in here in seventeen dot five zero dot one zero zero?
Existing vegetation? What, what do you leave in?
Seventeen point five zero point what?
Uh, seventeen point five zero point one zero zero.
One zero.
Stormwater ponds. Stormwater ponds, aesthetic features. Create ponds with, uh, let's see, surrounding environmental conditions, provide topographic bench around the perimeter. I'm just wondering if your wording is already in.
No, they're not ponds though. Bioswales and rain gardens, they're very different features. Oh, yeah. Think of like, uh, what they're talking about here. And this is what they proposed up at, uh, Duke's Hill. So, yeah, they need a whole lot of surface water retention and they have in their design. I mean, I looked at the plans. It's just a big old rectangular, uh, walk around drainage area, right? That's nothing like kind of, you know, like a kind of cool. And all it does is have, you know, just a path around it, which is compliant with this. You can walk around it, right? Throw a couple benches or whatever out there and you're compliant. Where bioswales are a little bit different. I mean, they're actually, there's vegetation that they put in there specifically for what they're trying to accommodate with water and things like that. Now, water's typically running through it all the time because it's coming from another area going through that system. It's daylight. It is really what it comes down to, right? I mean, that would be a.
Yeah. Yeah, and they, they, sometimes they have plants to take like oil, oil out of the, out of the water. Uh, and things like that, yeah, so. Yeah.
So do we have to add a section into this for what you're talking about or?
I think if I'm understanding the request correctly, we can just add to section C or subsection C of section seventeen fifty one hundred.
Seventeen fifty one hundred. Would that be the spot for this bioswale?
Well, we, I, to add into what everybody's saying, I think it just needs to be renamed, okay? Instead of stormwater ponds, let's just call it surface water management, whatever we come up with. Cause there's all different ways outside of stormwater ponds. That's just one feature.
And then add those extras, yeah. Bioswales and the things, yeah.
We're talking about surface water management here and there's different ways, including stormwater ponds.
Okay.
Cause we had some, wasn't you, wasn't you Nicole? It wasn't you that went up and did the kind of tour around and got pictures of all the different kinds of ponds and, and stuff when you first, when you first came to work here?
I don't recall doing that, but.
There's like a picture of the bullions and minions.
Done a lot of ti- a lot of things in my time here.
Somebody that worked with John, um, went out and, um, and brought us all kinds of pictures from Bellingham and from all over the place of, of the ponds. That's how the ponds got in there was that, um, they were showing how, uh, maybe it was John himself and then there were, you know, just showing how they were using, they were basically permanent ponds and then also the, the dry ponds, ones that, that are like retention ponds that go dry. So anyway, that's when the ponds got put in. But, um, but I agree that, uh, if, if we just change the name and then add the bioswales and, um, rain gardens, then, you know, we can just keep adding to it as people come up with.
And technology changes and it's accepted as, uh, as a design for a site for exactly that. It's surface water that's the issue.
Yeah.
So marking all of this as future amendments, but we will certainly look into it and study it more, come up with, uh, something nice for you guys to review.
So what I'm.
What I'm hearing is our goal is still to have a public meeting about this and that would, bioswales and so on would be something in the future?
Yes.
Okay, got it. Matt, or Commissioner, do you have any?
I did have notes for the last meeting. I can't find them. I suppose not. I did have one comment on chapter twelve. But I think I answered my own question. My question was, on chapter twelve, uh, forty, that seventy?
Seventy?
But why are we breaking out, uh, the trees within? Let me find it.
Was it the clear vision?
Right. No trees shall be planted within twenty-five feet of a fire hydrant. I didn't understand why that was being removed.
Yeah, that's a good question. So, um, I didn't remove this, um, clause. I, uh, uh, relocated it to twelve dot forty dot zero three zero, um, permission to plant trees. Uh, clear vision area in my perspective, um, has to do more with, um, trees. Clear vision area, in my perspective, has to do more with trees being at the corners of intersections and protecting traffic safety. Whereas the provision or the requiring that trees be planted further than twenty feet away from a fire hydrant, I felt better, was better suited for the permission to plant trees.
I figured that was the case. I just didn't see where it was being moved to. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner DuVoyne's brought up a good point, though. Clear vision areas. A lot of intersections get blocked by bushes, not trees. And this doesn't cover anything about bushes in this whole thing, does it? And I imagine it's, the homeowners are responsible.
So we do have a separate chapter. It's called General Regulations for All Zones, not included here, but it has a definition for clear vision triangle, which does specify, nothing can be placed in this vision area. So that's structures like fences, buildings, et cetera, trees, bushes, your bike, like, anything like that. You can't place it there in the city. If there is a complaint or if we see something like that, we'll come out and remove it.
Really?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because when you leave Clangerville to turn right onto Cook, you can't see the traffic because of all the recycling bins lined up along the sidewalk that nobody can walk on either.
Not a perfect sign.
Okay. And along West Jones and things, there's all kinds of overgrown bushes and grass and everything that's, I don't know who owns it, but it's a hazard. So I'll just call you next time I see a problem.
Yeah.
There's a lot of them on Alderwood, Alderwood Lane. Where I live, it's the, the old utility poles and the spot where everybody parks to wait for the drug dealers to bring them their drugs. And the utility vehicles park there when they're waiting for, to meet their other crews or whatever. There's always something parked there and you can't see north towards the fire station to see if anybody's coming down there at fifty miles an hour until you're halfway out in the street, so.
I guess that's for a different day of discussions.
Well, it just needs a couple bollards or rocks, but anyway, but that's a problem in a lot of places in town that
It is. Yeah, yeah. Nathan's got his hands full, so I get those phone calls forwarded to Nathan, so. He gets a lot of those.
I have you on speed dial now.
Yeah.
So any other comment before we look into, is to see if this is ready for next month's public meeting?
Can I request one tiny thing in twelve forty-ten? Just because when I was reading through it, I had to read the sentence three times in order to get what they were saying. So we just need a comma. It is right before it goes to the next page there, twelve forty-ten. So on the same page as the, the, oh, what is this? The table of contents, I guess.
It's two of
Yeah, so right that line, council, the council has become concerned with the proper selection, location and care of trees planted in planting strips, other public places and adjacent areas, and has studied ways to eliminate problems connected with adequate street illumination, safety to the community, preservation of public utilities. There needs to be a comma after safety to the community. And if it gets missed, it's not the end of the world, but if we're making, I saw we made another correction in there, so.
It's funny, you got missed because it's the immediate change of the page right there. Okay. Nice catch.
So do we make a recommendation or vote on, are we ready for a public meeting next month, or what?
You don't need to make a motion, just
No need to make a motion?
No, not at this time, but
Okay. Are we all in favor then of this being public next month?
I'm fine with it myself.
Okay, good to go.
Cool. We will prepare for a public hearing at the next meeting with all these changes.
Okay.
Thank you.
That section of unfinished business is over at seven twenty-three. Moving on to number two, council requested updates to recommended amendments to Chapter one seven dot two four, Seidro Willie Municipal Code Minimum Commercial Retail Floor Area in CBD.
Okay. So you might remember this one. It's been a minute since we've seen it. I did take it to council, April tenth, and that was intended, that was the second read, intended for action. They do support our recommendation to add a minimum commercial retail floor area for first floor area facing primary street frontage in the CBD. They like that it will help to prevent deviation from the planned land use of those buildings, making sure that our primarily commercial district remains that way. But they would actually like to see that percentage increased from fifty percent to seventy-five. So that was a very minor, well, minor in language, but I don't know. I'd like to discuss that a little bit. Basically, that change means that, it's just more incentive when you have a smaller lot. You don't have as much space for residential now. So it's really, it's pushing people to build primarily commercial. So you may not have enough space. If you have a smaller lot, you may not have enough space to accommodate for residential on your lot. And the council would like it that way. We still do allow for that ten percent encroachment into the commercial space. So if you're wanting to put one unit, something like that, and have a little bit of a lobby area in your commercial space, then that does, the amendment still do allow for that. But, yeah, fifty percent to seventy-five.
You know, we're talking about the first floor and I, I don't even know how we came up with fifty percent. I thought that was, I thought it was higher than that. I mean, seventy-five, I'm okay with personally, because we're talking about the first floor in the CBD is exactly that. So it's not primarily a residential, although that's some of the feedback that we heard last night.
We, we did this right after we did the thing where we were talking about like brew pubs and, and distilling downtown and all that. And I'm wondering if it just carried over into the, into the next thing? Because I think it's low, too.
Yeah, I don't think I would, I would have been okay with fifty percent myself, but then again, you know.
Yeah, I would have said at least sixty. I wonder if that was a typo, but.
Correcting our own, and we started talking about brew pubs and it's like, oh, forget about the floor space.
Yeah. It's kind of funny, because I was in the same boat. I reviewed our planning commission meetings. I was like, okay, they said fifty, so I put it in there. Yeah. Interesting.
Seventy-five is fine, yeah. I think that's, that's correcting our error is what it is. And it's the first floor we're talking about.
Yes.
So even on a small lot, you could still have a second story that is one hundred percent.
It's common to have people living, I, when I used to go to work at Snelson, I went by the Urban Village every day. And then downstairs floor was empty and it was telling me, why? And I can't recall ever seeing in most of those buildings residential area in the bottom four.
Yeah, so
To my knowledge, it's all commercial and every building in the other borough on the bottom four. So it, when I built this, they changed it from fifty to seventy-five. It did not strike me as a burden to me, because I've never seen a commercial building with residential space on the bottom four. Maybe I've been seeing it, but is that common? Is that even this?
It's not common. So I'll mention over by Snelson, what you're looking at over there is the Urban Village mixed use. So it's a little bit of a different animal than the central business district allows for. So the UVMU essentially allows for a broader range of different commercial uses or allowance for residential as well. And the reason those commercial spaces have kind of sat vacant is developers, where the money comes from is the residential units. So what they've been doing is they'll construct the commercial space as a shell building. So what that means is it's literally just walls, windows. And the anticipation is that they'll finish the structure, have people move in, they'll get occupancy from us with the intention of submitting a tenant improvement permit in the future when they find out who is going to lease out that commercial space. And they'll upgrade that commercial space as necessary. And that's actually something that I've been interested in looking into, is how we can incentivize those commercial spaces to actually fill up more. Because, yeah, the whole, the whole purpose of the UVMU is to live, work and play all in one place. And so when you start packing people in there and there's no jobs for people to work out in the area, it just kind of defeats the purpose of what we've done there, so.
You know, to comment on that, it's real common in commercial mixed-use buildings. It's called vanilla shell. So if I'm working for a client that's a tenant, okay, I just know what my total square footage is, right? I know my total square footage. Do I need a bathroom even, right? So that's why they leave it the way it is. So until a tenant comes up and they know what they want to do, you're gonna have different attributes depending on the use. A bar, restaurant's gonna be very different than an accounting firm, a dental office and things like that. So I've been looking at that, that space that is vacant, and I'm just scratching my head, why is that vacant? Because you have a pretty darn captive audience in that building with a whole lot of people. Where's my donut shop? Just saying. And that's not on us. That's on them. To get their lease rates in right, maybe throw some money, because the owners typically will give you an allowance for X amount of TI. I mean, I've gotten over a hundred fifty thousand dollars in certain projects. So, yeah, that, that's why they leave it the way it is. But, you know, it's gonna be predicated on who's gonna be in there, the duration of the lease. You know, there's a whole bunch of factors. And those buildings are pretty, pretty new, so it's just a matter of letting it play out. And I didn't mean to interrupt you. I'm just saying that that's a real common thing
Right.
in mixed commercial is to do exactly why they're doing that. So there's a reason for it.
Right. So to get at your question, Matt, with the central business district, what's there is mixed-use buildings. So you have primarily commercial space at the bottom. What we allow for right now is residential units above or behind that commercial space. But we never did, when that permitted use was added, there was never any bounds placed on just how big that commercial space has to be. So what we've been seeing is people will apply for remodel permits and they're like, I would like to add more residential units behind my commercial space. So essentially, they'll remodel a portion of their commercial space to be residential units, add more bedrooms. Eventually, that commercial space gets smaller and smaller and smaller until you're left with maybe three hundred square feet of commercial space. Like, maybe you could get an ice cream parlor in there, but, you know. The intention of our central business district is just that business. We want to promote that this is a primarily commercial retail district. So we want to prevent that from happening. It's not common. It's only really happened a couple of times where we're like, red flag, red flag. But this is to prevent that from kind of getting out of hand.
She identified a prior loophole.
And you probably don't see it from the street.
Right. It's all at the back, so you might see it from an alley, but behind closed doors, it's really hard to know what's going on.
Right. It easier to assume there's all commercial, because there's traffic.
Yeah. Usually, we get the notification from adjacent business owners, hey, I've noticed some people coming and going pretty often from back here or something, so we'll go and check it out. Sure enough. So it's hard for us to catch, it is. But feeling if we put something in place here regulations-wise, then we'll have some teeth to kind of be better able to enforce it.
If we go from fifty to seventy-five, is that kind of people then are not remodeling? If, if the commercial space is getting smaller and smaller, yet we're allowing less commercial space, are people gonna have to take out the residential? Are people gonna have to take out the residential space?
Yes. If the remodels happen before these regulations are put in place, then there's nothing that I can do. But if the remodel happens after
Okay.
they will have to return it back to commercial space.
Okay.
Or if it changes hands, would I have to comply, or?
It's usually if, if they go and try to add to their building footprint or some kind of substantial development, then we'd look at that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So why aren't we, why aren't requiring, why aren't we requiring ninety, ninety percent on the ground floor and ten percent for an entrance to a second floor, second floor apartments? I mean, that's what most cities are that I've been to. Back east, the ground floor is commercial, but you can have an entrance to a second floor offices. And if they're three-story buildings, they can have offices or apartments on the second floor or offices on the second floor and apartments on the third floor for those, for those buildings. And I don't know why we're even entertaining having ground floor units in the CBD. It's
It's definitely something to discuss. The council's open to going higher than seventy-five percent, and so am I. The only risk that I have with that is maybe a bit of uproar with those that already do have residential spaces and suddenly they become non-conforming uses. And that'll make me have to go and police them, say they want to do any kind of substantial development. Suddenly, they do have to go and knock down their walls and kick people out and that sort of thing.
Anybody before the ordinance is grandfathered, so.
Unless they do substantial development.
Yeah, but they already know that. That's, that's part and parcel for any non-conforming use, whether it's an operation like this or a single-family residence that you just go up and down Highway twenty. They're all single-family residences and technically, they are all non-conforming uses. So this isn't anything new, so.
I was gonna say, the city upzoned my property on Haynes Street from, from R seven to, or to mixed commercial, even though I didn't want it and, and tells me I can't, and the city says I can't do anything. I can't change the property in any, any way without making it a commercial thing. And so, so lots of people get forced into non-conformings. That's, you know, just because the city wants a business where my house is doesn't mean they're gonna get a, at least right now, so. Anyway. But I'm just saying that everybody, everybody gets forced into situations they don't like, upzoning and whatnot. There's all, people all the time are getting changed to things they don't want, so.
We can blame the GMA for that, yes.
We can blame them, yeah.
If the planning commission would like it higher, say ninety percent, tell me now, I'll make the change.
My only concern is access to the living space upstairs.
That's what I was saying, that it should be
And I don't know, I'd have to draw it out on paper to see if you could do it in ten percent of the floor space.
Right.
Right. I think we talked about it when we were
Yeah, I thought we drew it all out and we made sure that there was access. And I thought it was closer to seventy-five percent leftover, but
Yeah. So I, anyway, at least something we should discuss, because, it doesn't have to be tonight, but can we have it on the agenda for another?
Well, I think you were wanting to put this to the public next month also. So should we table it till we figure out the floor space or go with the recommendation?
So I just did a quick calculation, right? So I took a twenty-five by forty-five foot building and then took ten percent of that. So an entrance area for the, if you had upper residential units, that's a hundred and twelve square feet. That's like half of a ten by twenty shed. That's all I gotta determine sizes. I mean, that's, that's big. I mean, you can have twenty foot by ten or configure it a different way. So ten percent, depending on these average building size here, which are twenty, twenty-five, maybe thirty feet, some of them. Some are bigger where the old, one of the churches where it's a longer frontage. But typically, I don't think I see anything down there more than twenty-five, thirty feet. Bullpen I can think of, it's like more of a double kind of lot kind of thing. But ten percent, just to get But ten percent just to get to the upstairs and keeping everything else.
It'd be nice if they didn't have to be, you know, like the Oddfellows building around on, on Woodworth and Ferry around the corner there across from US Bank.
Yeah.
The old Oddfellows, you know, it was just a stairway that went straight up, you know, it was three feet wide and it just went up to the upper floor. Be nice if they could put something a little nicer than that. But, but it doesn't take much space to get access to the, to the second floor of the, of the building. So, maybe, maybe fifteen percent?
You're thinking?
Eighty, that'd be eighty-five percent commercial and, and that probably would stop you from putting an apartment there. But you could still have your, it'd be a pretty tiny apartment for some, in some of these buildings, fifteen percent of the.
So we're going to see their seventy-five and go up ten percent to eighty-five?
Yeah, and that would give, that would give, that would give a business or an owner of a building fifteen percent to make a nicer entry than just a.
Yeah.
Straight upstairs.
Yeah.
And a lift, right? Because you have to put a lift in for.
Right.
You have to put in sprinklers and a lift for anything on, above the second floor in, in this. So you do need a little space for, for stuff to go up.
That's what I was thinking. If you have a staircase and an elevator lobby, then you would need a little more.
Yeah.
I don't know, though, in our downtown.
If I can ask a question. So if you have a, a single-story building and the front part of it is commercial, you can't have a apartment on the back end then? Like, alley access to the apartment?
Not in the CBD, I guess. That's what, what we're talking about right now. The CBD, we want it to be primarily business-related. We don't want to encourage people from putting apartments on the first floor. So if you're going vertical, which, you know, we got three stories in the CBD, you know, if they want the residences, especially the one property that, that burned on down, I guess the, the, the whole premise is to keep it commercial, to not encourage apartments on the first floor. It doesn't say second, third, or thereafter. So we're talking specifically on that first-floor level. But, yeah, I've seen people do, you know, like, Seven-Eleven kind of stuff or, you know, just little mini-marts that they want an apartment in the back.
Yeah, and I have seen that. Yeah, and I, I know.
Trying to discourage that, I believe, yeah.
You probably don't see it anymore, but I know some of the old-time mom-and-pop grocery stores.
Yeah, they want to be right there, yeah.
Family lives in the back and their store's in the front part, yeah.
Could you refresh my memory? There's, there's no live-work in the CBD, right?
Yes, there is. So, so I like to think of it as a square, as a rectangle. But not all rectangles are squares, right? So, so a live-work unit is a type of mixed use.
Right.
So the difference being that for a live-work unit, think of it as a one-to-one ratio, where the same person that owns and operates the business below also lives upstairs. One, essentially one unit. Mixed use is different. You have a larger commercial space owned and operated by whoever, and you can have multiple units upstairs. You can have one, you can have twelve, whatever. Also, that, those units are, are lived in by anyone. They don't have to be associated with that commercial space. That's the difference. It's really the owner occupancy kind of thing.
That's where that fifty-fifty came in. We got, we got distracted.
Yeah.
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 I, I thought we wound up with the work-live units only being in the transitional for the industrial because of the fact that the CBD already allows for mixed use.
Yes, but, so essentially, live-work units, the way that we define them, they are more restrictive. The purpose of removing them from the permitted uses list was just to specify they're allowed here just without these restrictions, if that makes sense. Because mixed use is already.
Okay, I did, I did not catch that nuance.
And I'm, I'm not against them, but we originally put them in the code back in two thousand three, two thousand four, whatever, because we wanted them as buffers between commercial and industrial or residential and industrial or residential and commercial. So, because they were like kind of half and half. And so they made a buffer between the two. And that was the only reason we put them in then. But now, now, you know, it's just another, another option for people to live in, so.
Right.
A thought, though, to the director's comment about apartment behind. Even if we didn't allow an apartment on the bottom floor, we are considering garages to be residential and that would kind of preclude that, then people having garages. I don't even know if that's possible in the CBD, but I believe we did specifically, unless I'm mixing it up with the UVMU.
Private garages are considered a residential use and shall not count toward commercial.
Obviously, I guess you could drive up to, it would be, you're not really going to have those on the second floor, so.
Yep. This, worth some thought.
So this is going to require some editing if we basically.
It's, it's a real nuanced thing because, I mean, if you have, if you have the roll-up delivery door and you back up the delivery truck to the thing, you're basically putting it in the garage to unload the, the goods. So, it's all about intended, it's all about intended use versus, versus specified use, so.
Yeah, and I guess you could think of it this way. It's like, it does, it does not incent, disincentivate? What's the word for that?
Disincentivize. Okay, we got you.
Disincentivizes private garages, right? So it's furthering that point. We don't want residential. You know, storage and silvery to your business is fine, but not private garage.
Yeah.
It's pretty clear, too. Council wants a higher number, and I agree with that. I'm surprised we let that. I think we got distracted on the live-work kind of thing when we were doing those calculations. So are we good with eighty-five, fifteen?
I, I think that's a good compromise. That's way up from where we were. And, you know, without some, one of you, one of you math geniuses doing, running the numbers, it seems like, you know, you can, we can always push it up even higher, but if, at some point, but that should make city council happy and it still leaves room for a lobby, an elevator to the second story if somebody wants to, you know, do the whole thing and, and put in the sprinklers and the elevator and the walk-up and have something up above.
Just so long as we're aware, we've basically written out garages, the possibility.
I have to confess, I didn't read all this. I didn't have time before we got here. But conditional uses on alcohol-serving establishments. A minimum of sixty percent of the building. What's that about?
So those are going to be your breweries, distilleries, and wineries? Totally separate? Like, if you're doing one of those, basically disregard that.
We, we basically drew a line and said that if you're going to, if your production of alcoholic stuff was going to be your main thing you're doing, then it needed to be out in the industrial zone. And you could have a small taproom out there.
Yeah.
And if you're doing it here, you could sell your, you could, you could brew in a small portion of the thing, but basically you're a pub with, with the, with a small brew.
Okay.
And you see, see the difference, yeah.
And if you go into these places, they go vertical with their tanks.
Yeah.
Like, they're real high. They're all real high and thin. Like Boundary Bay up in Bellingham, it's just a small portion of the building, but those things come up on the scale, close to three stories.
Yeah. Icicle Brewery in, in Leavenworth, same thing. Just a little corner of the building.
Right, but they go up.
Vertical tower, yeah.
Well, anybody else have anything, comments on the eighty-five percent suggestion?
I would probably not go up. My personal opinion that you were above eighty-five percent at this time. I think that's pretty restrictive if somebody more than eighty-five percent. It's here in my opinion, pretty restrictive if somebody wanted to live behind their business. My opinion.
Too restrictive? Is that what you're saying?
My, my opinion would be not go above eighty-five percent.
Not above eighty-five? Okay.
The fifteen accommodates an entrance way for, you know, elevators or staircases. Depending on the size of the average building down here, it's, it's not a massive amount of space. Twenty-five by forty-five building was only like a hundred and twelve, a hundred and fifteen square feet. So it's kind of like, I don't know, from me to you, to a little bit further behind. That's why it was like a lick of comparison. It's just about ten feet and a half. Maybe go another, you know, seven or eight feet to walk up the steps at an elevator, so.
So, not to belabor the point, but just so I understand, and I'm, like, I'm still new to this. So if you have a single-story building downtown, you would have to have quite a bit of square footage before you could get that fifteen percent that could be used for an apartment of a fair size.
Yes.
Typically, something like that, you'd want a hundred percent usage for the business, right? You know, restrict residences on the first floor, I believe, and that's what council's looking at as well. So that's where we have the fifty-fifty. We got a little confused on the live-work.
Yeah.
So I don't know. That, that made itself through, but they're, they're just correcting something we probably should have looked at, so.
Okay, so that, that encourages two stories if you want to have residential. And one story, you probably won't be able to do it.
Yeah, right, yeah. Which isn't a bad use. Actually, that's a great use. I mean, I'm right across the street at Downtown Forty-Eight. I walked everything. Some of the new, we have a new project where a building burned down. I think they're proposing, what, six units on top of that lower level?
I'm sorry, where?
On building that burnt down on.
Oh.
Oh, Woodworth and.
Right.
And.
And Beckett.
Yeah, roughly. Right now, we've just had a pre-application meeting on it, so they're not set to that, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
But they are going residential up on top versus the lower level.
Yes. Okay.
I have, I have one last question.
Go ahead.
Look, I just wanted to clarify, Nicole. So the city council only wanted to change the seventy-five percent and, and none of these other things in red are their changes. Those are still what we proposed when we were doing it, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
The only change they'd requested was to increase the fifty percent to seventy-five or higher.
Okay.
Seventy-five or higher?
Higher.
So we wouldn't be out of line then saying eighty-five?
No.
Okay.
More in line, actually.
More in line, okay. Well, unless we're missing, unless we're missing something, I, I don't see anything wrong with eighty-five if, if we want to bring, change it to that and put it up for the public meeting next month. And are we all in agreement with eighty-five?
I am.
Yeah. So, I'm sorry, we're just doing a public hearing, so we don't have to make a motion for that, so.
No, I'm just like the last one.
Okay, yeah.
Like the trees.
All right.
Okay, so with that change to eighty-five percent, we can give it to the public?
Sounds good. We'll prepare for a public hearing at the next meeting with the change request.
Okay. Any other changes before we move on? I'll assume not.
No.
Okay, so we're done with the commercial area, floor area in the CBD at seven fifty-three. Now we're moving on to new business. Growth Management Act Steering Committee, GMASC, proposed revisions to county-wide planning policies.
Am I going to jump in on this, Nicole?
If you like.
I believe you are.
Unless you want me to.
No, that's fine.
I've been talking, my voice kind of hurts.
That's fine, that's fine. I may present this and then ask for your additional comments. So, anyway, one of the things that I got to do when I was new is attend the meeting of the Growth Management Steering Committee. They were, have been in the process of amending the county-wide planning policies to accommodate a couple of the bills that came out of the legislature recently. One regarding housing and the other one regarding climate policy. Just a little bit of background, you probably know this, but just as by way of introduction. So when, when GMA passed back in nineteen ninety, it became a requirement of cities planning under GMA and counties to work together to come up with a set of mutually agreed-upon policies for planning, for your comprehensive plans. And this Skagit County, the last one they did, or maybe it was the only one they did, I'm not sure, but the last one they did was back in two thousand two. And that was the second attachment that you have here. I've worked, I was in Walla Walla County, and we sat down and we worked through our policies too. And they don't get updated too often. You know, part of it is you've got to get all the folks sitting at the table and agree on things. But it's easier to edit a document and come up with something new. And what this group has done is they've gone through and, and looked at the existing policies and suggested changes where, that, that are deemed necessary so that we're in line with these new legislative requirements. So housing and climate change, those are the primary two factors that are motivating the change. Probably a couple of typos they fixed too along the way. But anyway, it's quite a bit to go through. I hope you've had a chance to peruse these. There is a suggestion by, by the Skagit County Council of Governments that each city take these suggested revised policies back to their respective cities and the county and ask for a review and then get back comments to them. So what we are doing here is presenting these to you now and seeking your comments back. I know it's not been a whole lot of time to look this over. This thing's moving pretty fast. And then we want to take this to the city council then on, on the twenty-fourth and ask them the same. But also present any changes that you deem necessary as well.
And I do want to make one clarification. In the memo, it says we are planning on taking it to council for a public hearing on July twenty-fourth. We did miss the mark for the notice of public hearing to go out on time. So it's just going to go to the regular meeting for them to review and then we'll have that public hearing on August fourteenth at the following meeting.
Didn't they cancel their council meeting, their upcoming council meeting?
It was a joint, the joint meeting.
Meeting.
No, I know what you mean. There, there was a cancellation notice, but.
I saw it on the website.
Yeah, I don't know that they updated, but no, they, they are having a meeting. As it turns out, there's.
Okay, so, because I was looking for the meeting materials and, and they do have it still canceled on the calendar.
Yeah, I'll follow up with. Calendar tomorrow.
So there's a city council meeting, but it's not going to be a joint meeting?
No, it's not, it's not the joint meeting, no. Our joint meeting is on August twentieth, I think that is, yeah.
Sounds right.
I don't have the calendar in front of me.
City website right now has canceled city council meeting on the twenty-fourth.
I just.
I was looking at it today. I was like, wait a second, they canceled it.
Yeah, yeah, no. They are, they are demanding we get their items to them for the twenty-fourth, so. They are, I don't know what the reason was for, for canceling and then not canceling, so, but anyway. Yeah, we're going forward. So they'll have a chance twice to look at this. I know that's unfair. We didn't give you guys two turns to look at it, but.
It's okay. They have given us the deadline of August sixteenth to get the comments back to them. So as long as you guys get your comments to me by August fourteenth.
That's after the public meeting?
That's just before.
That's, so, GMASC has asked for all written comments by August sixteenth. We're planning on having final comments from council August fourteenth. So if you guys want to provide them by that same deadline, August fourteenth, that works for me. The best way to do it would be in writing, so if you want to send them over email, like a Word document, or if you want to write me a letter, have good handwriting if you're going to write me a letter, please. That'd work for me.
Then we can take them to council that night.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So on, on here, you have one section in red on the climate change, but we need to look at all of the entire document, every section. It's not just the one, I'm assuming, right?
Yeah, it's, it's.
Because it's a lot here, I mean.
It is a lot, yeah.
Yeah. Everything in red is what they have proposed to change. But if there are additional changes that you find. But if there are additional changes that you find are necessary...
That's by the fourteenth.
My experience with countywide planning policies, and again, I'm new to this area, but is, they are written specifically enough to meet the legislative intent, but broadly enough to still allow each community to tailor and still meet the requirements. We're still Seidra Woolley.
Respect the dash.
Yeah, so as you're thinking...
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, as you're thinking through your comments, think more on updates that would be reflective of the new housing and climate bill specifically. Don't get too...
Don't get far out in the weeds.
Yeah, don't get too into the weeds.
So I read through all the red lines and I know that the mayors and the county commissioners have all looked at this considerably, and that's where we're at at this point, so...
If you don't have comments, that's great.
Well, it's more whether or not we agree with this, it's really coming down from the state, and there, as you pointed out, and I could see that from how they were written, that they are putting in the minimum they can to leave us the maximum wiggle room for still being able to, you know, individually as jurisdictions, have our own, you know, policies in place. So some of them are really, really, especially the climate change stuff, is... I don't think they would have been that adamant about it if it wasn't something that was already... You know, I didn't sit there and read the RCW stuff, but I know that this stuff is stuff we don't have really any say in as far as, we just have to have something in there.
Right.
So, because I was thinking, well, I could write a letter, but it would just be like, why are we having all this, you know, so drastic, I guess, you know? How are we going to actually implement this? And I assume that's already been looked at, though. And, of course, that's still a question, how are we going to implement this, but I guess we'll figure it out.
Well, the... So the deadline for, on the sixteenth is then we take it back to that committee with comments, and each city, I'm sure, is going to have comments, and the county too. And then we root it out with our group there to see how we can come to some agreement. So I think it's okay to act, yeah, put your comments down. That's your, that's your job, and they do want to hear from you, so, and we want to hear from you too.
Is it okay for me to ask one question on the table? The housing, and of course...
Yeah.
Second to find it here, because to your point, on the housing stuff, so down in the housing section...
Which page?
Getting there.
I want to say fifty-two, I'm looking at it now, or thereabouts.
I think I might have scrolled past it.
See a lot of red.
Yes, it is, one of the two with a lot of red.
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
Fifty-two.
Uh, well, I'm looking at page sixteen of...
This is our content?
Uh, no, this is the countywide planning policies.
Which numbered section, because I have a different page.
Section number four, housing.
Yeah.
There are red lines there. Oh, no, I think you're right, Joe, I apologize.
See, I have everything in just one big PDF.
Yes, it is down in the...
So I was just going to ask if you have it split out.
It is down in the appendices, yes, it is down in the appendices.
My page number's not yours.
Yeah, so...
Oh, okay.
Page thirty-three. Actually, I was trying to figure out by looking at the framework agreement, and I was hoping just possibly somebody could answer this, so... And you kind of already did, Director, with this. So this is their initial allocations of net new housing, and then cities can come back and say, we don't think we can accommodate this amount, and that's still flexible, is that, is that what I'm hearing? And so our comprehensive plan update will be, our consultants will be crunching the numbers, and then this will come back? Or is this all kind of set in stone before we even get to our housing element in our comprehensive?
The first, it's my, it's my understanding that with feedback from the cities that they'll have to adjust the allocations, if possible, and by how much, I'm not sure. But, yeah, that's part of the feedback I was looking for.
And that would just be sometime in the next six months or a year prior to required adoption?
Yeah.
Yeah, because obviously I don't know how much our consultants have even started on all of this stuff yet. So I was, I was looking at some of those numbers going, wow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And keep in mind, that's a twenty-year projection.
Yeah.
And probably sooner than six months, I mean, they're crunching the numbers now. And we're looking for, you know, a draft document to be about March or April of next, you know, next spring, so...
Who gets to set the numbers? I mean, I'm looking at it, and this has always confused me, because low in Skagit County is going to be very, very different than in King County, and all, it's very generalized, low, very low, and extremely low. Right, I mean, it depends, right? I mean, who's setting that stuff up?
Well, the county does its own analysis, but they get a lot of the data from the, from the state, from the Office of Financial, oh, of Financial Management, and they do a lot of the population projections for us, and then we have to break it down by, by cities and counties.
Yeah, essentially, what our job is, is to send OFM all of our new structures built every year, and kind of based on a pattern that they look at from all of those past and current reports, then they kind of create an estimate based on that, how many new people will probably be moving to the city over the next twenty years.
But we don't break it out by, I mean, we don't do any analysis whatsoever as far as people's incomes, right? I mean, and that's what this is, it's taking it down another level, not just the number of units being put in, but identifying what particular tenant is going into a unit.
We haven't done that in the past.
Right, nobody does it.
Now we're required to.
Oh, really?
That's the difference.
So what do you do, ask for their tax returns, I mean, if they want an apartment, you know?
Yeah, it's, there's different, different types of housing fall under the different percent AMI categories, and so it's kind of breaking them up.
So you have to discriminate to sell?
Well, you can, and that's the joke of all this, is that, you know, it doesn't matter what you plan for. You can plan, you can build Crayola cottages expecting that you're going to get empty nesters and young people that don't have children yet, but in reality, you get whoever buys the unit, and they may have four kids and six cars, and they're going to try and cram all that into
Right.
the thing, right? You...
So...
What you plan for isn't necessarily, sorry.
You evaluate it, you don't discriminate.
You evaluate it.
Yeah, no, what, what, what they... What our job is, if I understand this correctly, is that when we set up our zoning and land use structure for the city, that we're going to have to, how do I word this?
Centimize.
Allow the right zoning for the different types of housing. So if an area shows that they are zero to thirty percent AMI, or, you know, something less than fifty percent, we're going to have to be able to find, or allow, excuse me, a zoning that would allow for, say, multifamily-type housing or some kind of low-income, low-barrier type housing. And also what we've discovered through this discussion, going in and out, what we've also discovered is that with the UGA, or, excuse me, with the county unincorporated areas, probably they aren't going to be able to accommodate the low-income housing because they just don't have the services, and cities do. So we're, cities are going to take the burden of that. I shouldn't say the burden, but we'll be providing those space, the zoning for those types of housing.
Doesn't that zoning already exist?
That's something we have to look at.
Okay.
Yeah. That's part of what we're directed to do through this, through this legislative instruction.
So what, and I'm not against it, I'm just being the devil's advocate here, I guess. But, so what happens if we put in an area where you can have tiny homes and, or small homes, just say, small homes, and I decide, once they're built, I'm going to buy three of them and turn them into rental apartments instead of, they're not on the market anymore for somebody who needs that because of their AMI? And, and so is there, is there going to be any kind of control on who buys what? Because that's what will happen, you know, you got, you got real estate, the REITs are buying up whole chunks of cities all over the country and turning them into rentals and stuff like that, because they know what the market is, and who wants them, and...
I guess that's not our problem, then, we provided the area.
Well, it is our problem, because they're requiring us to build infrastructure to solve a problem, and then it doesn't necessarily solve the problem, and we get stuck with housing that may or may not be good, good housing for the, for the community.
I think that that would come...
Very shallow thought process in Olympia.
My, I suspect that that would be addressed at the application process and conditions of approval. We're simply providing the zoning. When an applicant comes in and they want to do whatever project, whether it be tiny homes or whatever, and if it's in that particular zone that we've now targeted for multifamily housing for whatever income level, then I assume it'll be up to us in our review to make sure that that application complies with whatever the regulations are that come out of this project.
I see, okay.
Yeah, but that's a really good question.
Hadn't we talked actually on the cottage housing stuff about limiting it just so that couldn't happen? So, of course, that we may have to update our municipal code if we do have something, a situation like this where... Because I don't know if there's anything in place right now to really, where the planning, planner is able to look at an application and say, oh, you are too wealthy, or your, your potential clients are going to be too wealthy to live here.
Well, we did talk, last time, I don't know if it was about this, but we talked about the land trust idea that they were doing in Phoenix, where they, where they, they do the houses through the land trust, and then the rule is, is that you, you get the house for forty percent of whatever the market value is at the time you buy it, but it means that when you sell it, you're only going to get forty percent of what the market value is when you sell it, so you can't, it takes out the incentive to buy it as a house to flip or, or hold on to five years and then make a killing on...
That's assuming the value's going to go up. Markets cut both ways, and we've just been in a market here in the state of Washington that is not typical.
Right.
So, you're right, you could have bought forty percent back in, you know, whatever, when interest rates were three percent, and then, you know, now you go into a more normalized thing, all of a sudden, you could be underwater a little bit. I just don't know how you slice advice a lot of this stuff, so...
Yeah, yeah.
Then on the other end of the spectrum, how do you build a house for somebody that have one-twenty percent AMI? If I say I want to build a house on my two acres for a millionaire, he's, sorry, you got to put a whole bunch of tiny homes in there, because that's not allowed to make a nice house. So, seems to me that's impossible, too.
That's certainly something we're going to have to keep in mind as we come up with the development regulations for this. You know, my, my guess is that the zone would be set up so that it could allow low-barrier type housing, for example, but not restrict other types of residential development. I don't know exactly how that's, if that's where we're headed, but that's what I would suspect it. A good place that we could start from, so that we're not chopping up our city into different quadrants of types of housing.
Being the other side of the railroad tracks?
Yeah. Yeah, well, and funny, yeah, here with the five or six different, yeah, that's good. Appreciate that.
Commissioner Fatizzi makes a good point, though, I mean, it, you could very easily do that, and that's what they're trying to, I think, avoid, but, you know, inclusivity, diversity, all of that. But if you're starting to talk about, okay, do we have area to put certain, then you wind up with blocks of just one type of zoning, and then people gravitate towards certain neighborhoods based on what they are looking for in where they're living or what they can afford.
I've been really surprised personally that Sock Mountain View on the other side of Dukes Hill over there hasn't yet had anybody come in and buy up two house lots and take one of them down and add on to the other house and build a McMansion, it's got an awesome view, you know, and, and that, that's ripe, that's ripe for up, what do you call it, gentrification and upscaling, because a lot of those houses are, they're not going down in value, but they're starting to already show wear and tear and whatnot, and it'd be really easy for your millionaire to just come in and buy two of those, two of those lots and build himself a nice view, view house and all that. And it hasn't happened yet, though, a lot of them have been bought up for rentals, but not, but not for wealthy view, view lots, so...
Lots of good discussion here, I think you guys are bringing out good questions, good points, and you have to promise us that you'll stay on the planning commission through this process, please.
I got a question about something, I'll look it up here. Wish there was a quick way to look through here.
You're still looking at housing or a different...
No, I'm going to go back to the climate change and resiliency. If the, if the CCA is repealed, does that have any bearing on this at all?
I'm sorry, if, what's repealed?
The Climate Change Act, Climate Commitment Act, whatever it's called, CCA.
Oh.
If it's repealed, does, does this still have to be? I mean, would this be null and void, or does it still have to go on?
You mean at the state level?
Yeah.
Is it legisla, well, that would be a legislative act, I don't know. Yeah, I mean, anytime the legislature says you have to do X, Y, and Z, but then it comes back and said, no, for whatever reason, we're not going to do X, then, yeah, that, I guess.
This element, that, that, that climate change element, that's a mandate, it's not optional.
But is it based on the CCA?
Whatever they, they put in place, but it's a non-optional element. But like you're saying, let's say they repeal it, a lot of cities have elements in there that we don't have that are, you know, particular to them, so putting it in there is now mandatory, hence the quarter-million-dollar consultants.
Well, I'm just saying, we could work really hard at the wording here just to have it thrown out in November or whatever.
But it's still an element, it's still being there, it's just not mandatory.
Right.
So, good boy, thank you.
So, where are you looking at the document, is it in the...
But I know we're not supposed to talk about that, so I won't.
So, is this the document text?
Oh, so I just click on the link there?
Oh, no.
Yeah, they just made it mandatory.
As far as they're down, okay, sorry.
And there's a lot of other elements that we don't use.
Sorry, I thought it was in a totally different place, I didn't even go scroll down.
Oh, I got a question. In the meeting yesterday, I was going around to the different tables, and this has something to do with this. In the housing table, I think it said, I answered, I picked up the questionnaire, I wish they would have saved it, but it said, every lot in Seidra Woolley can have two ADUs, and that was news to me, and I'm on the planning commission. So was that a typo, or is that...
No, it's, I saw that same one.
Yeah.
The state mandated it now, they're the ones that said you have to have two ADUs. That was in eleven-thirty, I believe.
They just tripled, they just tripled the zone without even asking the cities what they thought about it.
They just kind of snuck that in on us, huh?
Yeah. Triple the density.
How do you manage a, how do you plan a city when you can't?
Yeah.
Why are we here?
With that...
They had the same.
There are still regulations that kind of help us out, lot coverage, for example. So I can't allow two ADUs if they will exceed their lot coverage requirement for the zone.
Is that still sixty, sixty-five percent?
Depends on the zone you're in, so R-five is going to be thirty-five percent, R-seven's going to be fifty. There's no lot coverage requirement in R-15. We don't currently allow ADUs in the R-15 zone, that may change. So that's something we will need to look at as part of updating our development regulations. If two ADUs are going to be required in all of our residential zones, we might want to look at adding a lot coverage in our R-15. That might change some other things, too, so, a lot to think about, but, yeah.
That's weird to take, to just expound upon what you're saying. The R-15 is intended for multifamily development, so that's a totally different... for multifamily development, so that's a totally different animal as to why you would even put an ADU on it to begin with, because you're going to maximize that density just because of the zone. So I'm just trying to think of how we can maybe tweak the R-15 that incorporates high density to exclude ADUs, because that's not what it's meant for. Like, all of a sudden, why do you have a couple spare parking spots, and we're going to throw a couple ADUs out there? So we might have some latitude on that.
Maybe. I'll have to look at the language in the, from, coming from the legislation, because the way I understand it, I could be wrong. I've been known to be wrong before. But I think that they are requiring us to allow for two ADUs for every residential lot.
That's how I read it.
So when that passed, Mount Vernon instituted, and I know I'm going to use the wrong, wrong word there, but basically these, it's not emergency, but regulations that kind of just went through council, and you can now come in with an application for two ADUs on either single or multifamily lots. But we have a little bit different regulations when it comes to lot coverage and that sort of thing, so.
Right. So I've had many people from the public come and ask about that, whether we're allowing them now or not, and kind of the way I've handled that question is our comprehensive plan update is underway. There are a lot of development regulations that will have to come of this. So the plan is, we will adopt the comprehensive plan update, take all of the changes and kind of make those at once. We don't want to kind of try to preemptively work something in that will affect other development regulations, and essentially, we'll just have to go back to the drawing board after we've done all the work to update the code.
That's the right, that's the right answer, because that's exactly what I'm hearing from other jurisdictions, where I have similar issues with the property, as to their code currently does not allow what they're supposed to be allowing, and that is just, that's the answer. We have to do this first before we can tell, and in some jurisdictions, depending on the size of it, you're at the two, to twenty-twenty-six. Because of our population, we have to be done in twenty-twenty-five, but the bigger hitters, okay, are coming in next year, and they have to have their code in by twenty-twenty-six. So there's a little confusion, depending on what you're really going to do, that you're three years out, and you still have no idea what it's going to be.
And remember when we were discussing ADUs? It's like, oh, not many people are going to do that, that, you know, it's going to be the odd rarity and all of that.
Expensive.
And so now they're flocking in to, to put one or two ADUs on their properties.
Yeah.
But you've got to look at the cost. The cost, I mean, we've, when Faber, when Raymond Faber was here, it's not cheap. Even doing a park model, by the time you have your land, your utilities, and everything else, that's an easy hundred grand right off the bat. A lot of that, you know, you can finance some of it, but not all of it. So those are pretty deep pockets, and there's a pretty high bar at the end of the day.
I'm just talking about people coming in that already have a house and want to put two ADUs on it, you know, so they have to run new sewer and stuff, but they already own the property, and they can bring in a manufactured home or something.
Don't give him any ideas.
Thirty-six ADUs.
Well, if you want, if you want econo-, or what do you call it, affordable housing, ADUs is probably the most affordable and the most controllable.
Right.
So, it's kind of a twofer there. People get income and people get cheap housing.
If you allow cardboard boxes, though, you can just kind of scrape them up when they melt and start over.
Exactly. Anyway.
I've got some realtor folks here. I'm curious about something. They just dawned on me. If you, so if you put two ADUs in your property, and let's say you've, one of them, an ADU here can be a basement apartment, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yes.
So if you've got two, if you've done that expense, and you've invested in the property, and you put two in there, that property overall becomes more valuable to the owner, right?
Absolutely, very much so. The bank will even consider that, without doubt. They'll want to know, as long as you did it legally. See, I see people put listings in there, oh, mother-in-law unit. Hey, was it permitted? A lot of times, they forget about that kind of stuff. So if you have your permits that are for those units, yeah, the bank is absolutely going to consider that as income. So let's say that property that you're buying now for seven-hundred grand versus five-hundred, okay, you're now allowed to use that income stream coming from that unit into your qualification for your loan. So very much so, yeah, that would be one reason why you would do it legally, because it's definitely going to pay you back at some point in the future.
So that property in that neighborhood suddenly becomes very expensive?
Correct, yeah.
That's interesting.
Yeah.
So you're, the overall housing market, you're-
Yeah. It only, it only goes up. We have finite, finite private land between public land and an ocean, and people like to live here, and-
People that live in the ADUs can't afford-
Prices go down.
But the owner just increased the value of the property.
They're investing in it. I mean, you know, they just have to come up with down payments and a whole bunch of things, maintain it.
Yeah.
You know, it's, you have your just regular utility bills and all that kind of stuff that goes along with it. It's no different whether it was attached or detached. From our perspective, we just want to make sure we know it's there in case somebody calls nine-one-one and has a heart attack or whatever. You know where you're going. Am I going to unit one-two-one-seven-A? Or you just showed up and you got, you know, three ADUs in the yard, or two, whatever it is, right? So it's more of a public service thing, and a public, you know, emergency response issue on top of that.
But to your point, Director, so, yeah, it's, ADUs on a lot, that's not going to be an affordable for a low-income family looking for their first home. They're not going to buy a home with an ADUs on it unless they can immediately rent that out and maybe recoup some of that income. It's really encouraging affordable housing for renters at most.
Well, it's also, it's also helping people who, so you're in your fifties and you're having, or you're retiring, and you don't have the income now. Now you have a rental to supplement your income so you can pay the property taxes and whatnot, and stay in your home.
There's all kinds of reasons. There's, everybody's got a different situation.
But it's not helping young people get into their own home, you know?
Well, thank you, Mr. Glover. What do we want to do with this? Is this, is this the end of the presentation? You want comments by August fourteenth or fourteenth, or sixteenth?
Yeah.
Okay.
By the fourteenth, or earlier.
Okay, the earlier the better.
Sixteenth.
And send them to you via email?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
You owe me a cent. You owe me a cent or whatever. Send you, or is it, okay?
What you sent is fine. If you'd like to make edits, you're welcome to do that, but I'm going to be collecting everything. Will be final August fourteenth, so no more changes after that. Let me know if you want to make changes. Otherwise, those are your final comments.
Can't say anything else.
I might send you any other comments, I leave the door open.
All righty.
Good.
Okay, before I close this new business, any final comments? Okay, new business is over at eight-twenty-eight. Anything else that anyone wants to say before we ask for adjournment? Anyone in favor of adjourning?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, Commissioner Fatisi and Commissioner Huggins, all those in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Aye.
Any further discussion?
Any further discussion? No.
No, okay. All those in favor of getting out of here?
Aye.
Aye.
No. Thank you, we're done at eight-twenty-eight.